Make your way back to your seats, we'll get started. Okay, so moving on to the next agenda item, we're gonna move down to down to agenda item number 11, E and BD Committee, at this time I'm gonna turn it over to the Chair.
Okay, I'll have the Vice Chair read it because his voice is like a sports broadcaster voice.
Thank you Chair. Ordinance of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe rescinding ordinance number 24-55. And again, I'm going to skip to the fourth whereas, whereas in the exercise of these authorities, the Tribal Council enacted ordinance number 24-55, December 31st, 2024, to regulate the meeting locations of tribal programs and standing committees of the Tribal Council. And whereas on September 5th, 2025, the Economic and Business Development Committee of the Tribal Council approved a motion to recommend rescinding ordinance number 24-55. And whereas the Tribal Council agrees with recommendations of the Economic and Business Development Committee, now therefore be ordained that the Tribal Council hereby rescinds ordinance number 24-55, December 31st, 2024, and be it further ordained that this ordinance shall take effect immediately and shall supersede, repeal, and replace all prior inconsistent laws of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Certification, motion.
Chair.
Alright, we've got motion. Okay, we got a question, go ahead, Councilman Lunderman.
Chair, I'd like to, I guess, I guess ask to make an amendment to that ordinance, if that's okay with the motion maker?
What's the amendment?
My motion be, or to to approve the ordinance with an amendment to provide that the tariff fees will not be waived, but to provide that the tariff revenue that is collected will be dedicated back to the government service.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Rizales, second by Councilman Cross. We got a question, go ahead.
So I don't exactly have the ordinance in front of me. Ordinance 24-55, and that's to prohibit meetings off reservation? And so our motion is to rescind that, to allow meetings off reservation? Is, was there a specific reason why the committee?
In discussion, we found that the ordinance was hindering a lot of what committees could do as far as meeting with outside groups and everything like that. Because it'd be harder for them to come here and ask to go meet.
Well, from observing, I don't think we saw a real problem with what we were doing. I mean, I don't see us hindering anything. And we're sitting here trying to figure out ways to bring in revenue for our casino, you know, that's one way to, you know, it's a meeting space there. And then you got your meeting space out to the cafe, the restaurant, I mean. I'm just saying that, you know, the way we are right now on a tight budget, I think we should just leave it as is until maybe the next calendar year and then we could take a look at it, but I just don't really see how it was hindering us as a committee.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, I know some of it was some of the opportunities we didn't have as far as hosting and economic business development, gathering with other tribes and everything. We couldn't do that ourselves because of this ordinance. But we met with one beginning of the year that was hosted, I think, I believe in conjunction with, and I might be wrong, but I'm pretty sure it was Cheyenne River and Rosebud were able to host one. We couldn't host one because of this ordinance. And there's just little opportunities like that that we miss. That was, that was the main reasoning behind it.
Okay, Secretary, call for the vote.
David Kelly?
No.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
George Dreamer Jr.?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man? Richard Greenwall Senior? Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Garfield Still?
No.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
No.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Nine yes, four no, two not voting. Motion carried.
Thank you Chair. The second item for EBD is ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe waiving the payment of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Employment Right Fees for the planning and construction of the Government Service Building in the Porcupine District. I'm going to skip to the third whereas. Whereas on September 12th, 2025, at the request of the Porcupine District, the Economic and Business Development Committee, by motion and vote, recommended adoption of this ordinance to waive the requirement that contractors and other covered employees hired to design and construct the Government Service Building in the Porcupine District pay the Tribal Employment Right Fee on services performed in connection with the planning.
Jeremy?
Hang on, Jeremy.
Steve sent a new one, and so that's the one we made a copy of. And he handed it out, and it says dedicating in the second sentence. Okay, alright.
Okay, I didn't get a copy of this. Can I?
Yep.
Get a copy? By payment, by the Tribal Employment Right Fee on services performed in connection with the planning, design, and construction of the building. Now therefore be ordained at the request of the Porcupine District, and in order to maximize the funds available for construction of the Government Service Building in the Porcupine District, the Tribal Council hereby declares that all contractors, subcontractors, and other covered employees shall be exempt from payment of the Tribal Employment Rights Fee under the Tribal Employment Rights Ordinance. Ordinance number 1-12 of May 4th, 2001, as amended for all services and work performed in connection with the planning, design, and construction of the Government Service Building in the Porcupine District.
Alright, go ahead.
This time, I'd like to motion to approve the ordinance with an amendment to provide that the tariff fees not be waived, but to provide that the tariff revenue that is collected will be dedicated back to the Porcupine Government Service Building project. That's my motion.
Okay, got motion by Councilman Lunderman, second by Councilman Still. Oh, got question, go ahead.
So this, is this an ordinance? Yeah, that's what I meant, it's an ordinance. So, and this is for our attorney. There has to be a waiver of the tariff ordinance then, because the tariff ordinance, in there, it defines a pie on how the percentages are split up. So Porcupine already paid their tariff fees, they're asking for those tariff fees back, that we dedicate this money back, but tariff ordinance says 33% goes to the districts and it's split up nine ways. So that portion of the tariff ordinance would have to be waived because if we're dedicating this back to them, then we're violating the tariff ordinance where that percentage is split up into 33.3%. So that, I mean, that's, I want an answer from our attorney first.
Chair, I believe Steve Gunn's online if we could.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This would, this would operate as a one-time or ad hoc amendment for this project only, that would dedicate the revenue from this project only back to this project. So it would operate as a one-time or ad hoc amendment. It wouldn't change the underlying tariff ordinance for all purposes, but it would change it, it would change it for purposes of this project.
Okay, the reason why I asked is because usually we waive before they're paid, and these were paid already. And so, you know, and Dave wasn't on the council then, but our district, under Mr. Paul Pawnee Leggins, when he was the chairman, and I brought this report to our council, was to waive the tariff fees and it was approved at our district, and I assumed it was approved here because I know I presented it and Stacy said you couldn't find it, right Stacy? But, so, our district wanted to do the same thing to put the money back into the project. So if this goes, then maybe that's something my district could look at also.
Councilor Chair? Weston?
You know, I think Steve Gunn is online, but if I recall, there was tariff fees put back into these projects. And I think you need to probably elaborate on that Steve, because I think we questioned that at the Wamblee meeting. And I think what happened is there was tariff fees put back into the nine projects, but what happened was those three districts waived their tariff fees. And that was Pine Ridge Village, Oglala, and I think they were saying Wounded Knee. So those three were waived. So when it came to our district, Wakpomni, Chris asked us if we could do the same thing so it could put the money back into the project, but we took it back to our district, district said no, because it's an ordinance and we shouldn't waive our tariff fees. So our district said no to it, so we took it back and we told Chris, Chris was there that night. So our district never waived our tariff fees, there's other districts that did neither. But at the same time, Steve, you need to kind of maybe elaborate on that, there's tariff fees already put in there. So why are we going to give it back? If could you answer that?
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, yes. The council did, originally the council passed an ordinance waiving the tariff fees for all nine buildings, then it rescinded that and added to the budget based on the original cost estimate for the build, which I think was 4.5 million per building. We all know that the cost of each building, the budget is now higher than 4.5, and I think most of the budgets are around 5.5. So, and I think what all the owners' representatives and contractors are telling you is that they are looking for every additional dollar that they can get to put back into the building, so that's, you are correct that the tariff fees were budgeted based on the original cost. And, and it is also correct that the owners' representatives are trying to get additional dollars to put back into those buildings. And to Mr. Steele's point, I think if, if a district like Wounded Knee wants to put their tariff fees back into the buildings, I do think that this, this ordinance, this approach would provide that pathway or that example for Wounded Knee or other districts to do that. So it's not a waiver of the fee, but it's a, it's a one-time dedication back to the same project so that the dollars can go back into these buildings.
I think that was what was originally said when the tariff fees were going to be waived at these construction projects, if I recall. And so to put it back into the project. But I think that some of us said no, district said no. So how much tariff fees did we put into the nine multipurpose buildings? What was the total amount? You gave us a number in Wamblee.
I'll have to pull that up. I think it's 1.62 million across the nine districts, it might be 180,000 per district.
Okay, and I think that this 33.3% tariff proposal that came to us, what we did was we tabled that. So right now that is tabled, so we never approved of the 30, 33.3% divided. So it's still at the current rate. Steve, it's not, it's not at 33, that's a proposed rate, but we didn't get to that yet to really sit down and agree to that. And I think that's gonna probably come at a later time with Tarot Office. I think we're gonna have a working session with Tarot, right James? And so we're gonna talk about that. But right now there's no approval of the 33.3% tariff. So it's still at that, the rate that it is, the current rate. But so with 180,000 per nine districts, each got that for tariff, I mean, why are we gonna not waive the tariff fee, but use that tariff fee? Is it gonna come out of this 180 and put back into their project? Yeah, that's what I want to know. Is that what you're looking at? We already gave tariff fees to it, so are you gonna take, are they gonna take the 180 and put it back into their project? They're not gonna waive their tariff fee, but they're gonna put that 180 back into their project. Is that what they're trying to do? Could you say yes or no?
What this, yes, I think the shortest answer is yes, the revenue would be paid into the tribe, and the tribe by this ordinance would dedicate it back to that building. And this is just responding to the request of the Tribal District itself. And the committee recognized, I guess, the desire of the district and put this forward. The only change is instead of waiving the fee, this would be to dedicate the revenue from the fee to the building itself, which is in essence the same result, meaning that the money goes to the building itself. So, and I think it's based on what the district itself wanted to do, but of course, it is council's decision, but that's what it is.
My second part of my question today is, we just talked earlier about, and I think Councilman Dillon made a motion in one of our council meetings that we bring in to start looking at all nine projects with basically like an audit of where we're at financially with every project. And now if we do this, is that gonna hurt that? I mean, I just need to hear from the attorney because I think we're not construction, but we're, we've got to get legal to ask, tell us that, so you know, right now, I guess I'm just kind of trying to think if this would hurt. Because we're gonna ask for, he said an audit to be looked at all nine districts to see, because some districts are not really up with their buildings yet.
Right, and obviously the deadline for expenditure of all ARPA funds is the end of 2026, so December 31st, 2026, and all of the buildings, all of the expenditures have to be complete by that time. I don't know that this would impact your ability to do an audit, it would just, you know, the contracts, and for Porcupine in particular, the contract is in place. The work is ongoing. The contract does provide for payment of a tariff fee, that will actually stay the same. But by this ordinance, if the council adopts it, you would dedicate the revenue back to the project so that for that project, they would have that additional bit of revenue to put into the, into the building. And that could include, you know, necessary fixtures or equipment or other costs. Each of the projects has had some unanticipated issue, and, and so this provides that additional revenue for the project. I don't think it will affect your audit of the Porcupine Building. Or if another district wants to follow this approach, it wouldn't affect your audit of the other district. But again, it is a policy decision for the council about whether you want to dedicate the tariff revenue back to the building, or if you want to use the tariff revenue for a different purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Standing Soldier?
It seems simpler if we just send a Porcupine or slice of the pie and then they put it back in where they choose to put it. I mean, we can circumvent this whole situation, send a $190,000 check out to Porcupine, and if they see fit to put it in their building, let them put it in their building. Why ask council to do it?
Mr. Standing Soldier, I think this just guarantees that result. It specifically dedicates the revenue to the project, so it may actually achieve the same result you're talking about. But it would make sure that the revenue is dedicated, and what we're, what we're being told by the, the request is coming from the district and from the project team, which is the owner's representative working with the district, that they had some unique issues and they do require additional revenue. And you know that they came to the council last session with a plan to pursue new markets tax credits, but this is another, another way of dedicating some revenue for that particular project. And again, if, if another district wanted to do the same thing, this, this would be the recommended approach.
Councilman Greenwall?
I was just, I was just gonna mention some of the stuff some of you already mentioned, Sonia talked about it. Right now we got districts that are unhappy with what they're seeing in their buildings right now, so you could say I'm gonna use it for this, but by the time it gets sent over to them, seems like it just disappears and you don't really see the money that Pine Ridge we took aside and we wanted to use for this or that. All of our guys are sitting there like, what the hell is this building? What is, what kind of building are we getting here? So, I mean, we could say it's used for this or that, but it goes into the black hole and whatever the change orders they come up with and it just disappears and you still get stuck with that same old shell of a building that you're gonna get. That's why we got this investigation that we wanted to, that you guys wanted to have done, and I'm on board with you on that, so. It's frustrating because it seems like every time we build something, it gets changed and changed and changed and changed. We're talking about the new childcare building, how much more that costs than the original structure that they wanted, so. But I just wanted to mention that, either way, I mean, it's, we're gonna end up with the same situation where we're gonna figure out why we got the buildings we did and it doesn't make sense.
Councilman Still?
For Norm's question, you know, the reason why he needs this ordinance is because with this ordinance, it gets to full 190,000. Without it, their district's only gonna get like 5,200 from Tarot. And if you look at, like Rich mentioned, every, every building, it don't look like it, it's really that much, but somehow we're spending a lot of money on it. Our, our, our building don't even have one pole up yet, not one pole, everything's laying on the ground. And I get texts from our, from, from the lady who's supposed to be our owner's rep, asking if we want to cut costs in some areas to save money to put here and there, and then it just concerns me because are we paying for their mess up because their engineer messed up on the concrete pour and the designs and where it didn't match up? And she assured us that they were gonna take responsibility and, and cover those costs. But it still worries me that, like you know what Rich says, we're finding additional dollars and we don't know if they're exactly going back to where we need them to. But being that these are our only opportunity to get a building, I think we just support the districts however they want to do it. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll second his motion.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor, Councilman Lunderman, second by Councilman Still. Offer vote?
I have a question, so how fair is that to the rest of us, our districts? When we were given 4.5 million dollars to, part of it was to construct our buildings. So when this audit comes back, then what is it gonna show? That you guys spent 4.5 or more than 4.5?
Well, you heard Steve.
See, that's why. I'm talking, hold on, I'm talking. It doesn't matter, you didn't waive your fee, but you're utilizing the tariff which should go back, really actually shouldn't be waived, and that's why I'm saying, is it gonna cost Wakpomni District 4.5 million to construct? The only thing that was coming forward was the extension, our buildings will get done in end of July. That was the only thing, didn't cost money, just saying we're gonna get done. But now you got Lake Creek District, Pass Creek, and Eagle Nest. Did theirs come back at a 4.5 million? Are they gonna come out about round that much? When, once they're done? And us too, Wakpomni? All the rest of the districts that are not doing this? Because now what they're saying is that they're running low on money. It concerns me because we had the comptroller giving us a breakdown of all what was left in the projects, each district. And she said the ones with the most money in each of those line items is because they're not, they still got money. Nothing is moving in that project. The ones that have less money is ones are getting done, getting complete. So that, you know, I'm just kind of thinking here about why are we gonna spend more on one project? And my district has to stick within that 4.5. Those are my questions, and I'm concerned if this passes, then that's gonna open up for the rest of the districts to say, well, we want the same thing.
And that is, that is available, that would be available.
Again, I'm just saying, that's why we asked for an audit of the projects.
On call, point of order, excuse me, on call, point of order here, could you guys not all talk at once here? And wait for the president to call on you. If the president would call on you, then you could talk, because otherwise you're gonna start both talking at once and then you know how that goes.
Well, we're just debating, Buzz, but I think there's a motion on the floor, Chair.
Well, if you're gonna debate, you should get the floor, but not all talk at, at a turn. Okay, we're gonna run this motion, man, it's just getting out of Sec, Secretary? We had, you had plenty of time on us, you had plenty of questions here, so, Secretary? We just need to move on.
For for clarification of this ordinance, I received one from Steve Gunn. And the one that Jeremy read has a different title and a whereas, and therefore be ordained. So we use the one that Steve Gunn has sent to us?
Yes, that is the amended one, the latest one that I emailed to you, Stacy, that's the one that I, that I motioned.
So can I read those clauses for the record?
Yes, please read it.
So the new title would be ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe dedicating the Oglala Sioux Tribe Tribal Employment Rights Fees for the planning and construction of the Government Service Building in the Porcupine District to the building project. And then there's a new whereas, the fourth whereas, instead of waiving the tariff fees, the tribal council enacts this ordinance to dedicate the tariff revenue to the building project for the government service building in Porcupine District. Now therefore be ordained in order to maximize the funds available for construction of the government service building in the Porcupine District, the tribal council hereby dedicates all tribal employment rights fees collected under the tribal employment's right ordinance, ordinance number zero one dash two as amended for all services and work performed in connection with the planning, design and construction of the government service building in the Porcupine District to the district government service building project.
Motion.
Okay. Well, the certification, we'll correct that.
Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
No.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yeah, no.
Was that a yes or no?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Tyler London.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
No.
Bo Little White Man. Richard Greenwald Senior.
This was a tough one because they approved ours when they did it, so in all fairness, I'm gonna vote yes this one time because they voted yes when Pine Ridge came to him.
Jeremy Rosales.
No.
Lyle Weston.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah, no.
Garfield Still. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
No.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Eight yes, seven no. Motion carried.
Thank you, Council. On behalf of Porcupine District, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next one. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the purchase by the Oglala Sioux Tribe Department of Transportation Motor Fuels Division of a mini excavator for the Oglala Sioux Tribe Public Works Stormwater Management Project. And I'm gonna skip to the fourth whereas, whereas the tribal council approved the tribal of approved the Oglala Sioux Tribe Public Works Stormwater Management Project, which involves the installation of culverts under identified roads to divert sub stormwater away from the roads and prevent road flooding and washout. And the public works project also involves the application of compressed fill and gravel onto the road to elevate the roads, thereby protecting them from washout and deterioration caused by stormwater. And whereas the project will improve tribal members' access to public healthcare and emergency medical services, and will also provide workforce development, including on the job training for un- unemployed and underemployed tribal members. Whereas on December thirty first, twenty twenty four, the tribe entered an interagency agreement with the Oglala Sioux Tribe Department of Transportation Motor Fuels Division to manage and oversee all aspects of the project and provide project management services, construction services and hauling services to carry out and complete the project. And whereas the Department of Transportation Motor Fuels Division requires certain equipment in order to complete the project. And whereas on October tenth, twenty twenty five, the Economic and Business Development Committee of the Tribal Council approved a motion to approve the acquisition by the Department of Transportation Motor Fuels Division of a mini excavator from general equipment in the amount of seventy nine thousand four hundred and twenty one dollars and thirty one cent pursuant to the interagency agreement for the project. As such, equipment is necessary for completion of the project. Purchases more cost effective than leasing and applicable procurement procedures have been followed and to refer to the executive committee. Now therefore be resolved that the executive committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribe hereby approves the acquisition. And I think that should be counsel. Approves the acquisition by the Department of Transportation Motor Fuels Division of a mini excavator from general equipment in the amount of seventy nine thousand four hundred and twenty one dollars thirty one cents pursuant to the interagency agreement of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Public Works Stormwater Management Project for the reasons set forth here in certification motion.
Motion by Councilman Rosales. Second by Councilman Cross. Roll call.
Question, Chair. It you know, at the the very beginning of this entire project, when we rolled in roughly about a year ago, we uh I fought pretty hard to get the remaining money over to the motor fuels program and and I don't know exactly where that money is sitting at right now, but I'm also reviewing the minutes. And they're doing a lot of purchases for to finish these projects and and I don't even know how far along they are. Uh, on ten ten, you know, they spent seventy two thousand. On ten ten again, another seventy two. Ten ten sixty six and a half. Then on ten ten again, another ten thousand, almost eleven. Then they got one for fifty fifty one thousand. Then another one at fifty one thousand. Then uh two hundred and twenty five thousand. You know, I'm 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 just questioning what's what's being done on the project itself, because these totals, you know, on new equipment add up significantly. And I feel that the people aren't getting the resource, you know, that they're entitled to. You know, I believe every district had five projects they were supposed to do and I I don't even know where they're at, so can somebody kind of explain that? Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Rosales.
Uh, the last update we had was at a road task force meeting this last Thursday. Um, I did ask for Mr. Lebo to bring forward a report to the next Economic and Business Development Meeting. Um, and he did bring a report, I believe the one prior to that. So, yeah, I mean, the information is available, I I strongly encourage that anybody who has any really concerns can come to any of the meetings, road task force or the Economic Business Development Meeting as as I did request a report from Mr. Lebo.
Councilman Cross.
Yeah, we've been we've been um assigned to this road task force and we've been consistent with it. Um, not only open to the ta- uh task force, but to tribal council, I think you all invited to come to these meetings and listen, I I know the I know the timing of it is kind of bad because it's on the same day with the finance committee. I think mostly we sit on finance, I think you'd rather prefer to sit on finance and then go to a task force meeting, but I know sometime we get council reps out there, um get the reports from Donnie and and if something, if there's some red flags pertaining to his spending or not spending, but the whole goal is to try to get that money spent before twenty twenty six and so far we've been, so far he's been giving us a good report on the projects on um on now it's, I know it's not satisfied satisfying to most of us and and then and and I know we, I know they're they're trying to address those those five roads that were selected by the districts. And and I think it's it's moving along according to them and sometimes it seemed like it's at a snail pace, but but the whole idea is to try to make sure that this task force is keeping on track of them to to um make sure that the this this um money is being spent and so I know there were some purchases, um that that um he was um wanting to purchase, but it was just for the stormwater project only. And so uh um that's that's just kind of a a a brief report and but I think the I think you're welcome to come um to the task force meeting and to address those concerns and so this is a resolution I was just brought to the committee, um and now if we want our full report, then I think we can have Mr. Lebo come here and or to the committee and to give us those reports. So with that, with that, sir, um I'm gonna motion to move forward, I mean not motion, but just run the vote.
Yep. Secretary, roll call.
Um, Jeremy. Mr. Rosales. In the last therefore, or in the last whereas clause, um would you like the sentence and to refer to the executive committee stricken because?
Yes, I believe that needs to be stricken.
So I'll remove that from the document, thank you. David Kelly.
Yeah, sure.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler London. George Dreamer Junior. Bo Little White Man. Richard Greenwald Senior.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yeah.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Still. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Thirteen yes, do not voting, motion carried.
Thank you, Council. Uh, fourth item on the list here, ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Tribal Council, the Oglala Sioux Tribe to rescind hiring freeze and other management policies for the Prairie Win Casino. In ordinance number twenty five, I don't know if we don't have the twenty five thirty two. There it is. It's not in the resolution. I think we'll have to put that in the resolution, twenty five thirty two. So skipping to the fourth whereas, whereas on August twenty fifth or August yes. When was it?
Twenty second.
August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, tribal council adopted ordinance number twenty five thirty two, which provided that on until further notice from the tribal council, the general manager of the Prairie Win Casino shall not hire any new employees at the casino or approve overtime work for any employee of the casino. And whereas ordinance number twenty five thirty two further provided that there shall be no salary employees at the Prairie Win Casino and all employees must perform their work at the casino property and they must use the casino time clock to record their hours worked. Whereas on November thirteen, twenty twenty five, the Economic and Business Development Committee of the Old Tribal Council recommended rescinding all previous action concerning the management plan of the Prairie Win Casino. Now therefore be it ordained that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council hereby rescinds ordinance number twenty five thirty two, which imposed a hiring freeze and other employment policies at the Prairie Win Casino. Certification motion.
Motion by Councilman Rosales, second by Councilman Weston. Roll call.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Tyler London. George Dreamer Junior. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Ah.
Garfield Still. James Cross.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Eleven yes, four not voting, motion carried.
And that's it for EBD. Thank you, Chair. And Council.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to next agenda item, education, at this time I will turn it over to the Chair.
Um, Val, I don't have that resolution for this one. Yeah, I have it basically ready. I got it, I got it. And then, um, Val, if you get could get ahold of Angela, she has a printout for her, oh, there she comes. If you can pass out copies, Angela. So, uh, resolution from the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, Oglala Sioux Tribe affirming the suspension of the American Horse School Board and appointing the Wisdom Keepers John Haas, Robert Tukro and Dr. Richard Ironclad as a interim school board for American Horse. Skipping down to the fourth, whereas the American Horse School is a tribally controlled school of the Oglala Sioux Tribe providing educational services for students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade, and whereas the American Horse School operates with a five member school board who are responsible for policy development and implementation and oversight of operations, management and administration of school activities in accordance with tribal state and federal laws. And whereas at a duly held education committee meeting by motion and vote suspended the American Horse School Board until further notice and recommends appointing an interim school board until the matter is resolved. And whereas there are questions regarding American Horse School Board expenditures and the OST Education Committee has determined that a financial review needs to be conducted and that the American Horse School Board should be suspended until further notice and that interim school should put be put in place until a financial review is completed and recommends the appointment of John Haas, Robert Tukro and Dr. Richard Ironclad of the Wisdom Keepers as an interim school board for American Horse School until the matter is resolved. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council does hereby affirm affirms a suspension of the current American Horse School Board until further notice and appoints John Haas, Robert Tukro and Dr. Richard Ironclad as an interim school board for the American Horse School until the matter is resolved. And be it further resolved, the OST Tribal Education Program is directed to have the financial review conducted within forty five days with a written report of findings provided to the tribal council. So Chair, this was on the agenda last month. Um, end of October and because we didn't get it finished or get to it, um, in that time, that forty five days was up according to this ordinance, so education committee met um two two Mondays ago and they 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 um extended that suspension for sixty days. And within that time, from our last uh education meeting two weeks ago till yesterday, we received a port for a report from Tribal Ed. And that's that's what was passed out. Um, it was supposed to be passed out at education yesterday, but um we couldn't make, we didn't have we couldn't have, we didn't have quorum, so this is um that's why it's passed out today. Um, I think if you need executive, we can do that, Chair. You.
Yeah, let's let's go into executive.
Motion and go into executive.
Motion by Councilman London. Second by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Call for the vote.
David Kelly.
No.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Good.
Tyler London.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man. Richard Greenwald Senior.
Yeah.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yeah.
Lyle Weston.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Garfield Still.
Oh.
Oh.
James Cross.
Oh.
Craig Dillon. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Troy Little.
No.
Nine yes, six no, motion carried. Going to executive at two fifty-six.